I'd like to call to order the Novi Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting this Thursday, June 12, 2025. Ask that you call and say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, would you call the roll?
Trustee Bartlett.
Here.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Gualapu.
Here.
Trustee Helvengus is here. Trustee Stirring.
Present.
Student Representative DeMore.
Here.
Student Representative Dohedwala is not here.
Thank you. Next item of business is the approval of the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us, and I might mention that included on the agenda, we have a closed session scheduled for the library director's review. So by approving the agenda, we'll be approving the closed session for the director's review. Any comments on the agenda, or do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I have a question.
The motion to approve the agenda has been moved and seconded. Secretary, would you call the vote?
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of two things. It's the approval of the minutes of the May 8, 2025 regular board meeting, and it also consists of the approval of the claims and the warrants in accounts 271 and 272, which are in pages 11 through 13. Do I hear a motion for approval of the consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes, actually, I have some questions on the warrants. On page 11, the engraver, halfway down, 5395? Yes. So why did that come out of 271? Should that not have been 272? Capital, I will double check on that. Thank you. Typically, technology does, oh, no, I apologize. This is for the IQ, and we actually moved all the IQ expenses last year for the current budget into 271. This isn't a capital expense. Okay. Yes. This is a replacement, so I apologize. I think you asked me that, did you ask me that in an email about that? No. No, okay. But this is- And that was something else last night. Okay. Yep. And further down, there's a couple payments to Baker &amp; Taylor and Midwest Tape. Yes. I mean, I can't, even though the account number is there, I can't really identify what that is just by whatever those numbers are, invoice numbers or whatever. I mean, I don't know what that is. Okay, so you're looking at which ones? I just want to make sure. One, two, three, four, the fifth, fourth and fifth from the bottom on that page, $2,500 and 30, almost $3,400. Okay. Those are also Baker &amp; Taylor would be books, Midwest Tape would be digital, not digital, but, well, they would be DVDs and things like that. So that, that's the account they're from. Do you want it to label, be labeled better for just what they are, the types of materials? Well, that would be helpful. Okay. Because, yeah. I will definitely, yep, I'll give that feedback to Vidia. Okay. Thank you. Those are the only questions I have. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions in regard to the consent agenda?
Actually, I do have one more, I'm sorry. There's a-
Tree's the only, you only get tree.
Well, this is my third. There's a charge for postage, but then there's also a monthly service charge to stamps.com? Yes, so that's the subscription that we use in order to do the mail by, the mail service that we send out materials by mail. Oh, so you have to sign up with them monthly? Correct, yes. In order to? Okay. That is my third in plan.
Any other discussion?
So it's a service that we, that we are, a subscription that we're part of, but then additional cost of postage depending on what's going out and how much. Okay, okay, yep.
Any other discussion or questions in regard to consent agenda? If not, we had a motion, it's been seconded. Secretary, would you call the vote?
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus is yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
And if I could just make a note to the secretary, I noticed that Alana is here now, and if we could mark her present.
Thank you, yep.
There are no presentations this evening. This would be the time for public comment. In order to hear all citizens at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer period. However, it is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. I see no people running up from the gallery to speak, so we will move on from public comments. Reports. Student representative report for May 2025.
So May was the last week of school, so a lot of exciting stuff happening with the library board for teens and tweens this month. So the Club Path Blood Event was held on May 1st. This event was for all fans of Greek mythology, monsters and mayhem. The observant loving Percy Jackson joined our monthly club for book talks, snacks, games and crafts inspired by the books. Attendance was seven. The No Required Reading Book Club was held on May 8th. Taking a break from reading for school, this club is just for teens. Each month, we will pick a new book to read and then come together to discuss our thoughts and feelings about the book. Attendance was one. The Novi Chess Club program was held on May 8th. This event provides an opportunity for teens and tweens to participate in games, learn about chess and sharpen their skills. Attendance was 13. The Watercolor Bookmark Event was held on May 27th. Tweens joined us to make their very own watercolor bookmarks. Attendance was seven. During May 2025, there were 506 patrons who visited Teen Space. The total weekly stats for Teen Space were, the week, May 1st and May 2nd, 56 attendees; May 5th through May 9th, 117 attendees; May 12th through May 16th, 110 attendees; May 19th through May 23rd, 105 attendees; and May 26th to May 30th, 118 attendees. Teen Space was not in session for May 26th for Memorial Day. And you can see the stats for the whole year, so we'll be talking about this more next month, but you can, that's there to take a look at. We'll talk more about the trends during our yearly report next month.
I'd also like to add about the, like, some of the attendance numbers. May is also our AP exam season, and seniors also wrapped up on May 14th, which is earlier than previous year, so I do think that contributes to some of the lower numbers and some of those bets. As for the Teen Advisory Board update, the ninth TAB meeting of the year was held on May 16th. This meeting was a conclusion to the Teen Advisory Board's fabulous year. Officer elections were held along with a super tasty ice cream bar, and finally, the meeting included a rapid presentation to showcase the fun activities and wonderful community service projects that TAB was a part of this year. All in all, this meeting concluded another successful year for the Novi Public Teen Advisory Board. Our attendance for this meeting was 12. As for upcoming programs this summer, we have Tuesday Tunes on the patio for July 8, 15th, 22nd, 29th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Collage Art on July 15th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. IQ Teen Invasion Miniature Bookcases from July 17th from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. Novi Chess Club on July 17th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And July, Tween Brown and Gold Kit, July, on July 18th. And then Tyler, there's three sessions, on July 23rd, taking place around 2:00 to 7:30 p.m. A Beginner Sewing Class, Making a Zipper Couch, on July 26th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the Marvel Superhero in Real Time Event, July 30th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And our Teen Stop, Teen Stop Display, Featured Books in Honor of the AAPI Month.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for student representative report? My observation, I wish we had all this stuff when I was a student.
Right, right, yes.
I do have something to add just for, for our young ladies. July's meeting will be their last meeting. They have been with us two years, a wonderful commitment. I met with them on Monday, and they're gearing up to present an annual report and, and numbers for you and presentation at the July meeting. We will also celebrate them. Alexa is going on to that Skirwolf, the University of Michigan. Her and I are rivals, and I told her we'll, we'll meet up at the game, the big game, which will be on East Lansing's campus this year. But I just want to, you know, we'll talk about them at the July meeting, but they have been just wonderful representatives, you know, for our teen community, and so we'll celebrate them. They'll present their annual presentation in July, and also, we will have a final look for you of what the signage will look like in the teen lounge. We are almost there with final drafts of that artwork. So I want to thank you for all that you've been doing for us. I think we've had a wonderful two years, so we look forward to your final presentation in July, okay?
Thank you so much for being able to serve on the board.
Yes, it's been a pleasure. I know Elena still is going to school, so I told her, you know, if she needs any reference or anything as she goes on into her higher years, we are, I'm happy to do that, and I know that Alexa, Alex, you're, you're going on to some fantastic things in Ann Arbor, so I wish you best. Yes, but we'll see them in July, okay? Thank you both, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Also Alexandra, in the, in the Civic Center, if you look, watch the calendar, the local alumni club does do a freshman send-off for all future Wolverine. You're welcome to attend.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda is the president's report. I will save my comments if they don't come up like in the Building Grounds Committee or in the Finance Committee, but they'll probably come up there, so I'll, I'll save my comments for that. Just wanted to note, the new board assignments, well, they're not really new, but they're on page 17 in terms of committee assignments, and I'd like to make one correction on page two. I'm still showing up as the chair there, but trustee Burke is really the chair if we, I think that's just being copied from the past.
It's my apologies.
I didn't notice that.
Okay. I thought trustee Burke would put more life to that committee, so I resigned and had her become the chair. Also, just in regard to my report, notice in item B, it is the evening for the director's annual review. That will be held in closed session at the end or near the end of this meeting. And with that, I have no other comments. Does anybody from the board have any comments about activities they've attended, are going to attend, that directly or indirectly relate to a library and may not otherwise come up in any of the board reports or the motions? Though Kathy, we depend on you so often for this.
No, I have nothing to say. My husband and I-
Let me write this down.
My husband and I did attend the Historical Commission's Normandy presentation. It was outstanding, very well attended. We enjoyed that very much, and Lori and Mark and I attended the unveiling of the new-
That's right, I forgot about that.
Book box, or reader box, read box, read box, yes, and that was, that was nice to see. It was nice to see so many people come out, and the family, I think, really appreciated it, so, good stuff.
That was good, that was very good.
And I don't know who painted it, but I know she was there, but it's gorgeous. She did a great job. It's really, really nice.
Her name is Linda McLean, and we actually, I made sure that her name and information went into our newest e-newsletter that went out, which, which features and lets everybody know that we've got our fifth one in the community, so, yeah, she did a beautiful job. And they were a great group, DKG, which is Education Sorority Fraternity, I think it's a sorority, but it's specifically for education, and they have reached out. They are friends, you know, with the Star Family, and so that's how the connection came, but they were, they were so great to work with, yeah. And it's open, and I can tell you, people are taking stuff because the park's open and it's been very busy, now that we finally, I think, are feeling summer.
I did, while, while we're on that subject, and it's probably further up in to your notes, but how do you measure how those book boxes?
So in terms, we, we count, and we know what we start with, and then we know how much we add each week.
Oh, okay.
And we go out every Wednesday. So what you're going to get is what we know has left the actual box, based on numbers.
Okay. Do people ever return things to the box? Does that-
Yes, and which means, you know, they would count back, but not, I mean, yes, they do, and we encourage it, but they don't have to either.
Right, right.
Because it says, take and pass on, or, but we will see things sometime. And sometimes people will actually return to the library, and then we try to get it back to boxes too.
Sure.
So the nice thing is, is they're all book plated specifically for read boxes, and they're, what I love about this project is, it's, it's donated materials. So this is one of the ways that we can, you know, put donated items that may, might not be in the building, or fit the building, or even the Friends with resale. It's another way to recycle books along in a positive way.
Have you had a lot of people, like, donate books through the boxes without you realizing it?
Some people have, I, I'd love to go on record then and say, please don't, because then we can make sure, you know, that we can look at them and, and also make sure that they get plated so that people know where they come from. We'd rather them donate just directly to the building first. Yep, because also, it could be something that could go in the collection. We'd love to put it in the collection for even more access, right, than just the one park. So, no, that's a great question as well.
Cool, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll just put in a plug for the Friends. Summer's finally arrived, and the Friends have wonderful song activities, concert activities on various Thursdays at Paradise Park, and also Tuesdays on the, in the library here on the patio. So I encourage everybody to take a look at those schedules and attend if possible. They're very enjoyable and well-attended, and I think well-appreciated by all those that go to them.
They are, and if I can add, President, Stirring, the Tuesday tunes, what we have worked is an opportunity to pick up lunch, you know, from the cafe, so that the cafe is also getting a little bit of-
Push.
Push as well, yes. So they are, they're definitely setting up their, you know, their coolers with salads and, and sandwiches, and you can pre-order, you can call ahead, preorder something if you'd like, or just pick up something when you come and then go out on the patio and enjoy it. So that's a way for them to get some exposure.
Good, good, great. Okay. With that, we're moving on to Treasurer's Report. Trustee Bartlett?
Well, we're going to be covering most of the Treasury information in the, in the first item for action. You will note, the only notice I'd wanted to let the board know, is you see a little bit more notes in the, on the right side that you normally do. For those that are not aware of it, the Director of Finance for the City of Novi's last day was May 30th. So we have had a change in the accounting staff. I know we on the Finance Committee were aware of it. I just wanted to let the entire board know.
Good. Okay. Any questions for the Treasurer? Moving on to the Director's Report. Director Farkas.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm on page 30, and I'd like to start with our July anniversaries that we're getting ready to celebrate. Keith Perfect will be celebrating 13 years, and he's with our Facilities Department. He's full-time. He comes with a lot of wonderful experience and does a lot of the hands-on projects that we have in the building. In, in fact, he also is our construction, does the construction of the read boxes, which are absolutely beautiful. So since we were talking about that, I think it's, it's appropriate to shout him out for that. But 13 years, so congratulations. And next, we have Donna Philippiac, nine years, Support Services, one of our clerks, does a great job, works on our desk regularly, interacting with patrons. Tracy Pelletier, also a Support Services clerk, and she's celebrating eight years, another face, you know, right at the desk and welcoming patrons. And then Dana Van Oost, who is our Communications Manager, and she's celebrating six years this year out of our Admin Department. So you see her work on a regular basis. In fact, a few of you have some drafts of some things to review that she's putting together with our new branding, so, doing a great job, as always. Following that, you can see a photo since we were talking about the read box. This is a photo of the group. They actually met with me in mid-May to label over 2,000 books that are being used in the read boxes this summer. Those 2,000 books, close to that, were actually donations that they generated and, and got and had left at the library, so then they worked to put their labels in. And we gave them a little bit of credit for the work that they did, and even though those books can be used at any of the read boxes, we put the majority to start over at the splash pad. But, so they came in and did all that work, which was wonderful. They were wonderful volunteers, and, and they were just a great group to work with.
Julie, could I ask, how many books go into the read box?
Depending on size, because, you know, if you have fiction, we put a small amount of adult because we find that youth materials are highly, highly, highly popular, which is, because of this group being educators, former educators, we actually asked for and got youth materials only, which was wonderful. But typically, 30 to 40 books can fit in the box at one time.
Oh, cool, okay.
Yeah. Page 31, very important information that I want to point out to you. Northville has decided to leave the consortium. They're not going, they're, they're still going to be a member of TLN, but they're leaving the actual shared catalog, okay? We, we have over 40 libraries that participate in the catalog, which gives a page when, when they walk in Novi, they can see our stuff, but they also see over 4 million items that are in other libraries that they can borrow. Northville has made the decision to leave the catalog and go out on their own. It's called, they, they go on on their own as, I'm trying to think of the word, I'm sorry, standalone. They're now going to be a standalone library, and we do, we have a few standalone libraries that are in TLN that work with us. But what that means is, Northville patrons, when they're ready to cut off and start their new catalog and their new service, Northville patrons are going to have to come back to Novi and register their Northville card back into our system. They will get access, but they're, they're going to be limited to only checking out 30 items. They're not going to be able to place holds because they're now part of their own system. And Northville has also, and so what that means is, they don't share the same, they won't be part of the actual shared system of our TLN delivery. They will work with Melcat and have it go through the Melcat State System and do their ordering. And, you know, we've talked a little bit about Melcat, and, and there's concerns just with IMLS, and will there be cuts or not? We don't know. What it means for a Novi patron is that Novi patrons, which I want to thank TLN, they worked with us to make sure that our Novi patrons, if they go over to Northville, they will have the opportunity to check out 30 items. So we're doing the same item checkout between the two libraries, knowing that we're neighbors, but, you know, they're, they're not going to also be able to place the holds and stuff, but they'll be able to go through our, our bigger system. So I just wanted to share these details. These come directly, you know, from, from TLN and from Northville, what their guidelines are. We haven't heard too much yet, and I know that this is just launching for the Northville Library to get all this work done, but, you know, we can give some details, which we are, we're providing all this information to not only our Novi patrons, but also to those Northville patrons that come over to us and, and borrow. It's very important that if someone were to have a question or concern, that they really take it back to the Northville Library because they're the ones making those decisions. But I'm, I also want to thank, you know, Northville for working with us to know that we could reciprocate 30 items and check out for our patrons. I don't see it being of, of huge concern for our patrons going over to Northville, and we'll wait and see, you know, what kind of the response is from the Northville patrons coming over. So there'll be a little bit of work for our team because we'll have to put in, anyone who's a Northville resident, you know, their cards back in the system. What it also will do is give us the opportunity to see how many Northville residents then are actually using our library, because they've got to physically make that first step to be part of, you know, to be part of our system again and get into our, and get into our Carl system. So after, next year, after a year, I'll be able to, you know, give you some information about how many Northville patrons and residents actually come over to Novi and, and benefit from our, from our collection as well.
What, what is the advantage to them to go on their own?
Um, I, autonomy for them to, you know, make their own decisions with their own catalog would be one, you know, to make their own rules. When it, when it comes to TLN, you know, we've got to make decisions as a big group that we hope will work for everyone who's using the catalog system. And sometimes there has been, you know, things that we, we won't be able to do at Novi because we want to make sure everyone's on the same page and we're, we're using the same rules. So for them, they want to make their own rules they can because they're using their own system.
Hmm.
That would be one pro. Yes.
Julie, you indicated that the Northville residents would have to register their library card with Novi-
Yes.
-to use the Novi library. Is that true for the Novi residents who want to register, who want to use the Northville facilities, they'd have to register their library card?
Yes, they will have to register, yes, the same way, because they're leaving Carl, so there's no connection to our library card holders, you know, and our library card members, until they go back in and get it put in.
And in the past, it just, you would show your card and you could just go in and use it, but now you have to really register it.
Yes, yes. So then she'll, she'll, and I, when I say she, that's Laura Mancino, Mancino from Northville, I know that she'll provide probably same numbers, and we can see how many Novi patrons go over to Northville as well, so, yep.
I'm wondering, since they're leaving the consortium, does that affect the smaller group that, like, sometimes we do shared programming, and-
Yeah.
Is that going to affect us?
It will not at all, because that, that, we call that the neighborhood-
Yeah, the neighborhood, yeah.
The neighborhood libraries. And we're doing that as a perfo, a programming, you know, aspect of it. So I don't see that being any issue at all, yeah.
Do we have a feel for if residents follow the school system? Because we have a large number of Novi residents who go to the Northville school system.
Yes.
Do we have a feel, do those residents tend to, do we have any idea whether those residents tend to follow one library versus the other?
So what we call them, those are our Novils, and they actually pay Novi taxes, which means they belong to Novi, even though they go to the Northville schools. So there, there are, there are residents. If they go over to Northville, I'd be able to find more now when they re-register. I didn't have as good a feeling, you know, or sense of the numbers, and now we will be able to know that.
Do you think you have to preemptively have, like, like a short flyer?
We are.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
It's on website, you know, we're, we're pushing it everywhere, and yes, we do have information that we are-
To hand out.
Yes, that's going to be given out. In fact, we're actually going to be putting up a poster as well that helps Northville residents. It's going to be specifically for them for what they can do when they walk in the building. So we, we want to make their transition as easy as possible too. But if there are concerns and, and, you know, they, they find themselves unsure of what's going on, we want to also make sure that they go back to Northville to ask those questions. I, I wouldn't want my staff to take, you know-
Exactly.
-heated questions. I don't know if there will be, but, you know, why is this happening, or why, why is this, and us take any blame for changes like that when they're not ours. I'd like them to respectfully go back and-
Perfect.
-and speak with Northville.
Okay.
Julie, you mentioned the limit of like 30 books or 30.
Yes.
Is that per time period or per month or per year?
It's 30 total on your card, so you just can't go over 30 items on your card.
Oh, okay. So if you get 30 and you return 10, you get another 10.
It's just the total max amount for your card.
Do people ever max them out?
We have 100 at, at Novi. You can check out 100 items, so.
Wow.
I'm going to tell you, you think of moms and teachers and stuff. It is very easy to get, you know, to 50, 60 picture books for a couple of weeks, three weeks checkout. If you're reading them and using the library. We have a lot of heavy, robust users like that. Especially, you know, I love to point out teachers because they do. You know, they might come in and take out a small collection for their classroom and then bring it back. Because you know, they're responsible enough and they don't want to take the risk of losing something with students. We have a lot of people that check out good numbers. So I'm happy that T L N worked with us because I didn't want our patrons to feel that, you know, limit at 10. So 30 is good for both.
I kind of feel like that's a story opportunity. Is if we have any patrons that do hit the past 50 mark on a regular basis, that'd be such a cool story to promote.
Feature.
If they, if they're willing.
If they're willing, right. But yeah, but we do. You, especially now, we're coming to summer reading. So those goals of reading, you know, X amount of, right, titles or pages and stuff. So you see parents coming in and I, you know, kudos to parents because they take advantage of the summer and the opportunity to push reading in a fun way by, you know, coming in and taking a big stack of books out and walking out. So yeah, this is our busiest and best time of the year. Although every month I think is great, but this is just a fun time. You really see different, you see different people with a different perspective for the library in the summer.
Hope this information will be in the newsletter?
I'm sorry?
In the newsletter, will you be sending this?
Yes, we have already, actually, we've already started putting information out.
In the newsletter?
Yes, yeah. We wanted to make sure that our residents knew what was going on. And actually, when you go to the website right now, it's called out Northville residents to let them know, hey, you should read this because this affects you using Novi. So that's page 31. 32, I just gave you a little snapshot of the e-news just because it shows you the new Read Box being unveiled. 33 gives you my monthly report. And then Mark had mentioned, you know, Summer Song Fest. I'm sorry, I didn't put Tuesday tunes in. I will make sure that I get that in there so that you have those dates for the future. Because those are great events for you to, you know, visit and be a part of if you have the chance. Then following that are the different manager and supervisor reports. If there's any questions to that as well as the statistics, I'm open to answering anything that you may have.
Any questions for our director? No questions, thank you Julie.
You're welcome, thank you.
This is the second opportunity for public comment, but I do not see anybody in the audience. So we will pass the second public comment session. Next item is committee reports. At this time, I'll open this up to the board. Any chair or other member of the committee that does not have a matter if the specific matter is not coming up for a board vote for an opportunity to explain something that your committee is doing, contemplating, or has done.
Okay. DEI Committee, we are along with Julie going to be previewing a book called Serving Patrons With Disabilities. So this is an A L A publication that we're going to read and determine after we preview it if it's something that we want to pass along and invite other members to read.
Great. Anything else?
Yes, the Finance Committee had the first meeting with the folks doing our building assessment. It was very positive. We basically were talking about the, what the building is going to need for the next 20 years. You know, as far as upgrades, as far as maintenance. So it was very, very interesting on their part. The one challenging and very challenging portion of that meeting is that their estimate for our size building is that from our operational funds, we set aside $200,000 annually to essentially move to our 272 so that those, you know, any type of what comes up, what can happen is covered. Because we've got, if we don't have enough money in that fund, some of the things that can happen to a building, elevators, whatever, can deplete that fund rather quickly. In fact, they had a very interesting graph that they shared with us that I'm sure will be shared with, where they come through with their final report to the committee. After meeting with the Finance Committee and Julie, the grounds people, I gave them a tour of the building and they went through all floors and the roof in meticulous detail. So we anticipate that report to come out within the next month or two.
If I may add one thing based on that report, the individuals that were there indicated that most people do not do parking lot, oh, what's the term?
Maintenance. Well, it's the seal coating.
Seal coating.
Yeah.
Seal coating. And that was something that I think we were thinking about doing this fall, but they indicated seal coating really is not preventative maintenance. It's appearance maintenance, it just appears good. And that, that was confirmed to me by somebody else later. But so, in my opinion, just that one tip that we got from them, more than covered the costs of their study.
Yeah. So that's, if I can then raise that, I think that's one thing. We are set to do that Labor Day weekend. And it does include seal coating in it. So do you, I'll reach out. Do we want to do that then? We've got filling we have to do, the crack.
Filling is different, and well, I think it, this was kind of that we were always wondering. Should this have been in finance or should it have been in building and grounds?
Right, I know.
I'm mentioning it now, really, I think for building and grounds to receive that tip. I would encourage that we not do the seal coating. But you know, I think that's got to come more from the committee level. I know the other thing is usually when we have this done, we're sort of forced to close the library or we use an in-service day, which would be a nice thing if we didn't have to do that because we weren't seal coating.
We won't. We're actually, we're using the Labor Day weekend to have the work done. And it does not impact any service to our residents. But I, I will, that's something I have to stop in motion right away then. So I will.
We should, we should get a quote for just the repairs.
I have it. I have, I have the full quote, but it's broken down. So I, knowing that now, I'll go ahead and put a stop on that particular part, but I've got to reach out to somebody.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. What did we just do in May?
Last year, May. That was a seal coating and, yep. That was seal coating. Yep, and we were, it was, it was a year ago. And we used Memorial Weekend.
Oh, that holiday.
That was a year ago, yep. That was seal coating and a little bit of patching that wasn't like crack, like major repair, which we did know we had to do this time. So I, so then the only thing is we'll want to do the striping though, because that needs to be done. But you can do striping without the seal coating. Is that right?
The seal coating is just basically a paint.
Right, right.
That doesn't even last that long.
No, and that's what we found out that was very interesting. So I'm like, huh, that's, that's a chunk of money. So I will stop part of that process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And Building and Ground Committee, I was not able to attend that meeting on May 29. But the meeting was held and the committee met with the architect to review the options for the new front door system that would improve the cold air issue. If you see in the page number 102, that's a picture, the second one, which is closed one.
These are some preliminary drawings for you.
It's closed.
And some ideas and thoughts to consider in the future. The Finance Committee would like to wait and just kind of put a pause on building for a moment with this only because the reserve study is done, you know, is being done. And so this will also be part of the information that will go with the reserve study is, are these doors and at least the cost of them to plug in so that you have that.
Yeah, the estimation cost would be 42,160 K. There's a lot of difference.
Big difference, yeah.
That's a big range.
What was the, like, one set of doors, is this much and another set of doors is that much?
Well, using the.
The revolving doors are a little bit more expensive than the push.
Just regular pull doors.
Just using the existing dustabule or?
Yes, everything can stay the same.
They're not bringing down like the ceiling to create near game or?
No, no, the numbers that he cited were pretty impressive. The difference that we make just by not having those automatic doors standing open that long.
Yep.
Whether you do, whether you do a pull door or whether you do a revolving door, there's the cutoff of both doors being open at the same time. And I was very surprised that the anticipated cost was as low as what it was estimated to be.
Some more to come on that, but we're at a really good point.
Yeah, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask this question. On page 99, for the reserve stuff, it says, "Components which typically fail this test include exterior entry doors." So how does that figure in then? Given that we just talked about it, if they're saying?
Nope, that's part of the information that we'll be giving them. And they will look at it as well.
As part of this, okay, all right, gotcha.
Those are replacements. Those are normal replacements we do over time, those doors. And so if this is being talked about, they'll make sure that that's part of it. We made them aware of it.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Any other committee comments? If not, we are moving on to matters for Library Board Action. The first matter that's up is to approve the fourth quarter amendment for library budgets 271 and 272 for year 2024, 2025, as shown forth on pages 18 through 22. And because there's so many marks there, if it's easier to know what we're looking, the motion to approve is the items in, one, two, three, basically fourth column where it says 2024, 2025, fourth quarter. And the changes that are there are outlined in yellow to make it easier for us to identify what those changes would be. And those would be changes from our previous year-end budget or the initial budget. What this essentially does is lowers our deficit from an anticipated 405,000 to an anticipated 312,000. And those members on the committee will note that there's still a lot of numbers we haven't got from the city. We think we're going to do better than that, but we really don't have the specific numbers to make a better judgment on our budget. And we want to, we always budget a little high.
Yes.
So this is still a somewhat conservative budget, but it's an improvement of at least $100,000 from where we were the last time we looked at that budget.
You are correct. I had the opportunity to sit down with the interim financial officer for the city and go through line by line, everything. We were both pretty well in sync with the new numbers providing to you tonight. If you approve this, it'll go to City Council for them. They don't approve our budget, but they recognize it. I want to make sure we use some different language from now on because you all are the approvers of the library's budget. But they will recognize the fourth quarter of the library's budget because they need to for even auditing purposes and to finish out the year end. But they'll recognize it, they do that at the June 23 meeting. And so this is why we had to get this for them and to be ready. But you are correct, President Sturing. I do believe that 312 will be a little less because of some revenue numbers that could not be finalized, but were given better than they were before.
Well, we have different numbers presented to, is this what's going to be presented to City Council for June 23rd or?
Yes. This is what's going to be presented as a fourth quarter, yes. But here's what happens. We still have to finish out the year. So we still have stuff that we're paying and revenue coming in until the end of June. And so really, and then the audit starts the end of the summer. But I think we will be safe by probably mid-July when we meet, that our numbers will be pretty good at that point. We don't need to do any other amendments, but these are numbers then that I might use with the reserve because the numbers I originally shared with the company for reserve were based on February and you planning for '25, '26. And those are already changing as well. So we do have more, more changes. And there will be a first, there will be a first quarter amendment that you'll have to make in the fall because we know these changes occurred fourth quarter. Is everybody, yeah, a lot of moving numbers.
Can I get a motion before we talk about it anymore? I meant to introduce it slightly, but I talked on too long.
Sorry, no.
I'd like to get a motion first.
Absolutely.
Move to approve. Do we need to say anything else?
Well, I'll second. Okay, now we can have the discussion. We scut into a little bit, but wanted to continue on Julie, if you were going to catch you off.
I think what I want to tell you is I really appreciate the Finance Committee because I've called you a lot and you've come in. And we've looked at a lot of numbers, you know, we've made a lot of changes. I appreciate us going through them line by line and having those discussions. Thank you for two sessions, you know, that we had just recently. We've got another session that we're going to have next week because I'm going to this weekend, I work Saturday. I'm going to start looking at what the reserve, now we're going to call this one the reserve budget, right? And try to give them something to work with that is good enough numbers to go forward. So I really do appreciate all your time. You've been very flexible with me and very accommodating to coming in.
And I'm going to add that we're looking to approve both the changes in funds 271 and 272. We've been talking about 271, but there are similar changes in 272, Fund 272, that we're fine tuning a little bit for fourth quarter.
And also to the good with 272 as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask the secretary to take the poll.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Stern?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Can I mention now that as well, the Finance Committee did look at a lot of the other numbers that were presented to us, even though they weren't the fourth quarter amendment. I just wanted to point out on page 23, the bottom numbers there of the balance sheet report as of May 31, 2025, we believe that those numbers are in error, that they just accidentally got repeated from the month before. So please don't rely on those two numbers because Julie's going to figure out what they should be, but they just look like they got repeated and they're not accurate and we know they're not accurate.
Right. And this, this is an internal report that we do. I will work with Bindia, she's been wonderful, but we'll make sure that we get you a new set. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
The motion was for, through page 22.
Yes.
The spreadsheet.
Item number two, approve the circulation policy, pages 67 to 74. And Julie, I'm going to let you explain this.
Did you take your vote?
We did.
We did.
Yes.
Should we do a motion before?
Okay.
We approved it, didn't we?
Yeah.
No, okay, okay. The approval of the circulation policy. And we'll do the motion first and then Julie can explain it.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? Can you give us an explanation, Julie?
Sure. So we, we've always had a circulation policy. This is all the information we need for how we, you know, issue cards, how we deal with payments, who is a user of our library, the different type of cards and access that we provide to our residents and business owners that could be in Novi as well, how standalone cards are used. Basically, this is just an overhaul and update. As you saw from the previous policy, we're including P4, which is miscellaneous provisions and fees and damage, destroyed, lost items, and P1, library card issuance. Those were two separate policies which relate to circulation that we're now bringing into the circulation policy as well. So really just a major cleanup at this point. Nothing major, honestly, for me to point out to you, except that we did put some language in specifically for our Northville users. And that, I just want to point that out to you. That is on, looking very quickly, I should have highlighted it, sorry.
I just don't want to miss it. I think it's 70 standalone libraries?
Yes, thank you. So this is information that, you know, we want to make sure we added the Northville District Library in that standalone language just so that we have something to when their people come in and question our policy. So very straightforward.
I think I've asked this before, Julie, but I know that some libraries somehow are able to incorporate their library card into their driver's license and so they can bring their driver's license in instead of the library card. Is that something that we've considered or not?
It's not, it's actually your driver's license being able to be used in order for us to get all that information easily from the card. But the library card itself and the driver's license, like we need the driver's license in order to issue a library card. You won't need your driver's license after that unless we have to verify information. The library card then becomes the card that you would use. And what we ask is that patrons have their library card either physically or on their phone digitally, so that we do have a card that we're using to check out.
Okay.
That's actually the bigger, that's actually the bigger need, is having card in hand.
Okay. And I'm asking it in the reverse kind of way, that once the card has been issued, there are some libraries that because they have the information from the card that somehow, you know, interplay with the driver's license, that the driver's license can be used at the library, and the library has all the information on the card anyway, but they don't need their card. They could, they could either bring either the card or the driver's license.
I would have to look into that because that is not something I'm really familiar with to see if that's an option. That I am not familiar with, but I'm happy to follow up.
They do it a great time.
But I think if you, if you forget your card and you go to the, and tell them, they'll ask you the driving license and you can get the books.
Well, you get a one time.
Only one time?
Yes. Because the problem is we really need the card to drive the use. And a lot of people, actually, what we find is they don't have their driver's license on them. And they come in without anything and they just want to check out their holds. And they're like, well, you can look me up. And they do that. And, and we're like, we can't because we have no way of verifying that it's.
Who you are.
You.
Yeah.
If it's linked to your card, then I think.
As long as the, so we have, yeah. Yeah, we haven't used the driver's license to drive the library card and the use of the library, so I will check into that for you.
Yeah, because it's basically.
Yes.
I'm told that one, they can get whatever information they want from the driver's license, just like the card.
So I, I don't.
It only gives the patrons a chance to use either one.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the license would be a manual checkout, though. You couldn't use the self-serve.
Sure.
Well, that makes sense, yeah.
They do. You run, you can scan the license and take the book out.
Yeah, I will have to check into that for you because I'm not familiar with that currently. And you said Trevor City does that?
You're saying you can use your driver's license and scan that as a self-checkout?
We would need a swapper.
Yeah, so I will check.
No, that may be a different type of checkout than what we have.
Right.
But it was kind of an interesting feature because, of course, I didn't have my library career.
I'll definitely, I'll definitely look into it, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't know.
Any other comments, questions for circulation policy? So for looking in.
All right, trustee Helvengas says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Sturing?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
And trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next matter to vote on is the approval of the confidentiality policy.
And again, this, we did have this policy already in place. Page eighty-two and eighty-three is the current policy. This got attorney review. What's added to this is some definitions that help understand confidentiality, you know, for our library card and access at the library. So that's new information that's been added. What also was added is the law enforcement record request and search procedures on page eighty-one. That's new language that's added from the old policy to the new one. And I also included the procedure so that you could see it. The procedure you are not approving, but I wanted you to have that information. The procedure is something new that we are putting in place. And we actually, my management team and I have a training next Tuesday to go over this because it's so legal and we want to make sure that we're understanding it and can follow the procedure in the right fashion.
That's what this is for?
Yeah, I was wondering about.
Yes. So I'm, I'm giving you the procedure just because it's mentioned in the policy, but you won't approve that procedure. You're just going to approve the new changes and updates to the actual confidentiality policy.
Nice introduction for it. Now I'm going to ask for a motion again.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're looking at me and I'm going on.
No, 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 no. Wait, no, we always do, we always do a brief introduction.
You've got to give her this.
We, we, sometimes our brief introductions become longer than brief, but anyway, but thank you.
You need to give me a beep.
No, 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 no. But I'd like to get a motion on the floor first.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Okay, so for the, the procedure part?
Yes.
That's just internal?
Yes.
That won't be public facing on the website?
Not at all.
Okay.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure, just one suggestion, though, like the, the last document that's a search and seizure warrant, if you want to make sure that that's watermarked too, like the other ones?
Yes, so these were given to be by the attorney, I'll double check. Absolutely.
Um, just to, just to be on the level with that, okay.
That was my main question, I wanted to make sure what was public facing and what wasn't, since we're voting on just the public.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. You are just, yeah, this will be an internal use document for us.
I have a question.
Yep.
So this procedure document, it has been or will be reviewed by the attorney?
It already has been, and actually it was given to us by the attorney. They said, with your new confidentiality policy and the updates that you're doing, we are recommending that you put this procedure in place.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's why we're going to do the training as well.
Okay. Does the city have a procedure like this?
They don't have, I, their confidentiality records are different, so I don't know. Ours are specific to library, so I've kept it that way. I didn't actually even look. We are part of their FOIA process, though, and you know that they're mentioned. We work with the city when it comes to FOIA.
Okay.
Yep.
Now I get why this was there, I was confused.
I just wanted you to have the whole backstory and all the information in advance.
Okay.
Any other questions to come? Secretary, would you call the poll?
Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Trustee Sturing?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengas says yes. Motion carries seven zero.
The next matter for library board action is to approve the public relations, media, photography, and videography policy. If someone can set up, move to approve the motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Now's a good time to discuss, or any comments?
So this is an updated policy as well, as you can see, lots of work with the staff, attorney review as well. A lot of new information, you know, when it comes to people and, and information and photographs and how to use them, we wanted to make sure that, you know, our policies were more up to date. What we are putting in place is an actual release form, which we've never had before. This will, you know, keep us, in terms of, you know, keeping us compliant, making sure that we do have people for their, you know, their permission to use them, and we'll keep this on file. This was a recommendation also from our attorney because she should be very careful. And, and the example she gave as just one, which I think is very good, is you might have different parents coming into the building, right? And one parent might be okay with their child being viewed, one might not. And if, if you don't have something in place that, that says that, you could be running into some legal issues, right? If a child's photo is used then and, and they didn't consent to it, or you don't have something in place in order to have that procedure, it's better to do that. There's, there's been a lot of safety concerns that have come over the years, not just for children, but people in general who don't want to have their face out there. And so we want to be very intentional about that for our community. So we take less photos now. That really has lessened our, our photo stock. But Dana, who's so amazing, is going to put a call-out for people who want to be models and show their face with the library. And then we'll have them sign our releases and use their photos and things throughout the building and at events and stuff. And so we'll do it that way, but then it's controlled enough to know that we have permission.
Okay, that's great.
Any discussion, any questions? Secretary, would you call the poll?
Trustee Sturing?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengas says yes. Trustee Gualapu?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is just to recognize the communications from Heidi Phillips to thank you to the library in general for being involved in the Novi student transition program. And we appreciate her, thank you. We have already, via approving our agenda, approved a closed session for the library director's annual review, which is, which we will now go to the other room to do that review. We will be back. I'm not sure when, but we will be back to report the results of that review. I wish I could give you an estimate of time, but some of these trustees speak a lot. I wish I could give you an estimate of time, but some of these trustees speak a lot.
And that motion is to give our director the same type of increase given to other staff this year, which would be a 3% increase from her current salary.
Motion approved. Second?
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Nope. Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Helvangas says yes. Trustee Galapu?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
I'd like to extend the thankfulness of all the board for the wonderful work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's an honor and privilege to work with all of you. And I do have a great staff, so I feel very blessed and looking forward to starting our new fiscal year. So, thank you very much.
With that, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Why don't we just all raise our hands?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.